Okay, let's reconvene. We are up to, yeah, item A-17, the petition and charter for the Global Vision Academy. And, yep. Tony?
Dr. Burks.
Yes, Dr. Burks.
So used to a lead-in statement from the superintendent. Thank you and good evening. We've got several items before you tonight. The first, of course, is San Diego Global Visions. As you recall, we held a public hearing for San Diego Global Visions Academy on January 19th, 2010, in accordance with the California Education Code. As a staff, we recommend that the Board of Education approve this particular charter petition for a five-year charter term beginning July 1st, 2010, and ending June 30th, 2015. As you can see in board docs, we provided feedback to the petitioners, and the petitioners provided a satisfactory response to the concerns that were outlined in the original charter petition. Of course, if the Board desires an additional option beyond approval, of course, you know you can approve the charter petition with conditions, or you could deny the charter petition, and the Board of Education would need to identify findings to support a decision to deny a petition.
And your recommendation is?
Our recommendation is for approval.
Okay, we've got one speaker on this item, Dina Harris.
Good evening. I'm Dina Harris. I'm the lead petitioner for San Diego Global Vision Academy. Last time we were here, John DeBeck mentioned he wanted something about accountability, so we brought additional sheets about what we're doing for accountability pieces. Want to give that to you. It is just like a short, it's like a cheat sheet, just so it's real clear. This is a little more color-coded. One sheet tells you timeline and exactly what we're doing.
We could use all the help we can get.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. And lastly, I just want to thank you for considering our charter, and we look forward to building a relationship with you. Thank you.
Great, thanks. Do we have a motion for approval of this charter petition?
I move for approval.
Second.
With the condition that when they come back, we see these results.
Okay. Okay, any further discussion?
Uh-uh.
Just point out to the Global Vision community that Dr. Burks commented that this is one of the best written petitions that he's seen, so thank you for all that hard work. Okay. Please, please vote. Great. Done. Okay, we just now have public hearings, so item A-18.
I'm saying this way.
Yeah. So, we have a new charter petition for Coleman Tech Charter High School, and we have two speakers. I bet Dr. Burks?
Again, in accordance with California Education Code, we must hold a public hearing when we receive a new charter petition, and this public hearing is for Coleman Tech Charter High School, which proposes to offer a grade nine through 12 configuration. We received the charter petition in January, however, it did not meet the teacher signature requirement at that time, and we informed the petitioners of this matter. They corrected things, got it back to us February 9th. And there's one other item I need to point out. We inform the petitioners that the location they specified in their charter petition does not meet the facility compliance requirements as established by the City of San Diego, and the petitioners, of course, may identify a compliant facility when the petition returns to the Board for action at a later meeting. And we will come back to you with this petition once we've had the opportunity to circulate it among our staff, and we share that feedback that we have with the petitioners. And of course, we've got some representatives from the petitioners here to speak.
Okay, we've got Nels Anderson and Tom Bartley.
Yes, good afternoon. My name is Tom Bartley. I live at 2708 Point Setia Drive in Point Loma, and the executive director of this charter school is Cola McKinnon, whom I have known and worked with in Chamber of Commerce for the last five years. So I'm here to speak on his behalf of someone that can get done what he says he can get done. Thank you.
My name's Nels Anderson. I live at 2816 West Canyon Avenue in San Diego. I am a father of an eighth grader who's been in charter schools for the past few years, and we're hoping that you guys will do everything you can so that we can open Coleman Tech High this fall, because he's in the eighth grade. In public schools, he became an invisible student, not a troublemaker or anything like that. He would just blend into the background and try not to avoid, or try to avoid any sort of academic growth, whereas project-based schools, he seems to thrive in, and we'd like to continue that if possible. We really like the agenda that Coleman Tech has. That's all I have.
Right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Burks. Okay, any comments on this?
This is a public hearing, first information, right?
Yeah.
Some of the links aren't working for me out.
Okay. Okay, so let's move on to item A-19, the public hearing on the renewal charter petition for the King Chavez Arts Academy. Dr. Burks?
I'm going to try to talk about all three of these, so we won't have to do the up and down. Of course, California Education Code requires that the district call a public hearing whenever a charter school seeks the renewal of its charter petition. This is a public hearing for the renewal of charter petitions with three of the King Chavez Academies: arts, athletics, and primary. No action, of course, is required at this time. As you know, arts and athletics offers a three-through-five grade configuration. The primary academy offers grades kindergarten through second grade configuration. The schools were initially approved on March 1st, 2005, and are returning to renew their charter petitions. We will present these three charter petitions to the Board of Education for action once we, as a staff, have shared feedback with the petitioners. We certainly will be glad to entertain questions you have. We also have Dr. Tim Wolf, and I'm not sure if there's anyone else, but certainly Dr. Tim Wolf is available here for questions that you may have.
Yeah, so if we could ask Tim to come up. Tim Wolf and Douglas Harrell.
Tim Wolf, I'm the chief executive officer of King Chavez Public Schools, superintendent, interim superintendent, coab, president Barrera, and members of the board. On March 9th of this year, we were informed, actually through the media, that the King Chavez Arts Academy was on the persistently low achieving school list. We take full responsibility for the Arts Academy test scores, but it is important to view this placement on this list in a broader context. Voluntarily, we have taken the following steps in the last year and a half, because the Arts Academy was not making the progress that our other King Chavez schools were. We have replaced the principal and eight out of 10 of the teachers, which is exactly what the feds are asking us to do again. We brought in a lead principal coach, the first-year Lucy Fowers, whom most of you know as the former director, retired now from Einstein Schools, and this year Doug Harrell from Edison, Vice President of Edison Schools in California.
Excuse me, so Ms. Fowers is, was only for last year? She's not continuing?
Yes. We instituted a more vigorous benchmarks assessment against MAP standards using the data director, which you use here at the district. We trained teachers for additional ELL time in the instructional day, lengthened the school day, and voluntarily applied for WASC accreditation, which we have interim accreditation for three years. The Arts Academy, as well as the primary academies, were formed from the reconstitution of King Elementary, which was a failing district school in 2004, 2005, and was, needed to be reconstituted under the first year of reconstitution and under the "no child left behind." Looking at this positively, the Arts Academy has increased API scores 100 points over the last four years. Arts and athletics, excuse me, athletics, 197 points over the last four years. Primary academy, 258 points over the last four years. If you look at the aggregate scores for the arts, athletics, and primary, which was the former King Elementary, we have moved test scores each year on the average of 46 points, as compared to the failing scores of King Elementary School in 2004, 2005, as well as changing the school culture, investing in the physical plan, and involving parents in every aspect of the school. The district has reviewed the Arts Academy and recommended it for renewal. All of this points out the prescriptive nature of what the state is doing, the oversimplicity of this list from the Department of Education and their formula for identification in schools. Thank you for your time.
All right, Douglas Harrell?
Good evening, Superintendent and Honorable Board members. My name is Doug Harrell. I have considerable experience in as an educator. I have been an elementary school principal, a high school principal, and a middle school principal, and for the last two years, I served as a Vice President of Education Services for Edison Schools, which my responsibilities, I was in charge of every Edison charter school in the state of California. I was lucky to get involved with this organization, to kind of bring the same level of rigor that I have brought to the other schools. I now supervise the principals. I form what we call, what is it called, a professional learning community with the principals that I meet on a bi-weekly basis to share best practices, to do professional development. I also supervise the teachers at the schools. I go in on a weekly basis. We bring rigor in the point that we do benchmark assessments now on a monthly basis, and we not just disaggregate our data, but we really do a diagnostic and a prescriptive service with our benchmarks now. So what we do is we look at our kids, and we really list what are the exact standards that our kids are missing, and so we feel that we're totally data-driven and standards-based now. And then we come up with a prescription approach, and creative approach to meet those needs. We'll go in and we'll test for two months, and we'll reteach or give extension for two weeks after that, and then we'll use that information to do in-school, after-school interventions. We will be creative with classes so that we meet their needs. We also have instituted a new ELD program there, where we're going to do mandatory 30 minutes every day, plus do the sheltered and the SADI and PSYOP techniques during the day, during the classroom. And I could list a host of new ideas that I'm going to bring to this organization, so I know we'll continue to move our organization further. I went into every school and started off with the needs assessment in five different areas. First area is curriculum and instruction. The second area is teaching and learning, culture and climate, demographics, and test-taking. And when you go through those four areas, I ask four questions. What are we doing well that we should continue to do? What are we doing that we need to tweak a little bit? What are we doing that we shouldn't be doing? And what aren't we not doing that we should be doing? And after that, I made sure that every staff prioritized that list, what they're doing well. We put it in green. What they're tweaking, we're putting in yellow. What they're not doing, we're putting in red. And then we're coming up with what we call an action plan master calendar. From that calendar, we do a professional development calendar, and then everything moves to a site plan. And so that way, we structured and organized our future based on those types of organization and techniques. And then we brought this small school model in, so now that we not only have principals' PLC, but we have grade-level PLCs that meet consistently on a weekly basis.
Mr. Harrell, you're working with all three schools or just with the arts?
No, all of the schools.
All of the schools, yes?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
It's been a pleasure talking to you. Thank you.
So Ms. Nakamura?
Yeah, I just want to say, I think it's a particular shame that it happens to be your arts school that is doing poorly, and I just want to impress upon you that I think you have a special obligation. You know, the community at large tends to, society tends to think that the arts are not rigorous, and there is, in fact, no one who needs a better education than an artist, because so frequently, their arts will not support them by themselves, and if that is the life that they choose to pursue, if that is their vocation, they need an education, probably more than anyone else, because there's always going to have to be something else. They're either going to be writing grants, or, you know, working in some other occupation, and I think it is a special charge when you put the term "arts" on a school, that you make sure that school succeeds.
Any other comments, Mr. DeBeck?
Well, I'm going to go to your renewal of charts, page 13, actually, page 14, page 11505. And what I'd like to talk about was, I guess, my question would be, I guess, line 505 thereon talks about what the school would do, and I believe that was the lines that were in the original charter. So then the question is, it says, and the data is not there to show what you did as compared to the regular charter. And I'll just read some of it. The school of demonstrated students who were in our standard, as a comparison, the district schools that have similar student demographics. I don't see that data. You have the same, you have to do it again, but I don't see the original data compared to the new data. Okay? The next one starts in line 510. The academy, I'm just going to say it quickly. The chief score is on the anti-manage department, out of both those targeted by the state and no power line, and all those API scores, those student district schools that King Chavez, I don't care what the state says about, you know, the argument they're achieving so much, if I want to go back to your original charter and see if you're reading the statements that you made, you know? And so, the argument would be, well, there's no school that's comparing myself with, also in the API, but I don't see a data. Okay? So then, if you're in a renewal, my manager is always saying, what do you say you're going to do, and where are you going? But if that data's absent in a renewal, then the argument is, trust me. And I don't think that's appropriate for this school. And I have no guarantee of trust in my own school, unless you're. But the point is, I need to have these data, is a student will choose that access, this is 515. Students will choose that access for the art-based standards, which neither state is taught as chief vice district school. I don't have the data. So, either it's missed by trust, and you're going to renew it because, or you have some data that supports it again. Okay? I would hope, you know, I can't expect you to have all the data supported, or some data, which doesn't have to be in the major report. And maybe I'm missing it, because I just got some of it, but I think it would be easier to simplify the report if you said, here's what we said, here's the baseline data, here's where we are, and here's the other schools, and then, and a half a point. So is that what you said, is you're a half a point, the light school? And if the light school don't exist, we didn't know that.
Yeah, we can get you a summary of that data before the next vote. Mr. DeBeck?
I was going to discuss before we got to that stage, you know, with that like today would be nice, if it was in there. And it was, you know, I mean, you yourself, you know, remain a promise, you said it, because it's not the difference. And I heard you say, so I'm very interested, but I didn't see it before. Or, you know, ten minutes or whatever. But see, that's a critical part of it, because, you know, you've got some place to show promise. I've never argued that, you know? I mean, I sympathize if you took on a fight. But the issue for me is, when you put on that, how does it do? That's my question.
We can certainly provide you that in more detail.
Okay, any further comments on King Chavez Arts? Okay, thanks, Tim. We've got one speaker on all the King Chavez items, Kevin Malloy.
My name is Kevin Malloy. I'm a senior financial accountant in the district's charter school accounting office. Five years ago, when the district schools, when several district schools converted to charter schools run by nonprofit organizations, their employees were permitted to continue the district employment as on-loan employees. This was an entitlement not previously enjoyed by district staff seeking to work at charters run by nonprofit organizations. One of the major reasons these schools converted to charter status was to gain control of their staffing and not to have to abide by district rules and union contracts. The schools could hire and fire the staff that will, and those seeking employment knew they would not have the safety net of a district job, except, of course, those that were on loan employees from the district. The on-loan status was only supposed to last for five years until the charter school's petition came up for renewal. This charade should never have happened, but apparently, under threat of litigation, the Board has decided to permanently grandfather this job entitlement. This is particularly egregious, coming from the senior management of charter schools that constantly extol the virtues of at-will contracts while condemning school staffs and unions as only seeing the district employment as an entitlement. When the Board of King Chavez Arts did not renew the contracts, the ten teachers, the teachers came before this Board seeking redress. This Board's response was, you made a decision, you have to live with it. The King Chavez teachers should only have been so lucky to be on loan employees from the district. It is unethical of the Boards of nonprofit organizations running charter schools to very publicly criticize this type of job entitlement, that they are affording their management employees while denying this benefit to their own other staff. This is typical of the do-as-I-say, not-as-I-do behavior of some sectors within the charter school community. It is unconscionable of this Board to permit us to continue to the detriment of the hard working staff of this district. Thank you.
Okay, do we have any further comments? Yeah, 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 sure.
I do appreciate that during the first five years of our charters, that you gave us the privilege of having on-loan employees, and I do realize that that time has run out, and we will not be having on-loan employees at the King Chavez Academies in the next academic year. Thank you.
Do we have any further comments on items A-20 or A-21? The petitions for the athletics or, renewal petitions for athletics or primary academy and King Chavez? Nope. Okay, we did have a speaker who wanted to address item 18. I'm sorry, did you?
Well, you know, I don't want to get into all this stuff, but I heard something that was really, he just recently granted some rights to people who are in charge, and he said they're on loan, he said, that's why. King saying they're not going to give it to us. And the question I have is, how many have two different sets of rules? Now, maybe there's something that I don't understand, but I need to have that come back to us.
Because, you know, it seems to me like the provisions that he granted, the people who are currently employed in charge, so that, that if they choose, if the charter chooses non-loyal, then they come back, is that correct or not?
Well, just my comment, but we could, I mean, my understanding is, we were?
I mean, I heard something differently, so I want to make sure I understand how that is, because I want to be consistent on how I think the former employees who took the charter, I don't want to have one set of people, kids, I call them because they're young, have one set of provisions and another set of nine.
So my understanding of the action that we took last week is it was specific to 20 people, who were, nine of whom were employees at Keeler, nine of whom at Gompers.
Nine of Gompers. Nine of the 20 are at Gompers, and the other 11 are spread across a couple of other schools.
Including King Chavez?
And I don't know, Tim, do you have any on-loan employees right now?
We have three this year.
Okay. Because we, our letters were going to be retracted by HR with the conditions that were directed by the district, by the Board last week, which was that we would continue to renew them each year on the 1st of March. They would have to acknowledge a decision whether they're going to return or not, but they would be the only 20 that would be in their long-term grandfathering, so that we're going forward with the direction of the Board.
Well, I guess the implication of is, I just, they're trying to do that, so therefore, those people, you can know they have lots of returns.
I just, yeah, we could clarify this. I don't remember that it was King Chavez staff on that.
I don't think there were any.
We said that, but we said that we're going to include those teachers that were on loan everywhere where they were.
Specific to 20 people.
Mr. DeBeck, one of our, one of our three is returning to the district under the agreement that she will have that seniority. The other two will be employed as King Chavez employees in the future and will not, and will lose their right of return to the district.
Yeah, I was going to say, Tim, they decided, they made their decision.
And we told them that originally that was a five-year deal, and.
Well, I just want to make sure we're consistent in the word of the people that are doing this.
Okay, great. Dr. Colin McKinnon wanted to speak on the Coleman Tech charter, which we already did, but please.
Yeah, thank you for letting us go out of order. I'm Colin McKinnon, one of the three petitioners and the executive director for Coleman Tech Charter High School. The others are Dr. Coleman Fur, the founder of Coleman College, which has been offering quality technology training and education in San Diego for more than 45 years, and Paul Panesar, the president of Coleman University. Paul is currently a doctoral student at Alliant University School of Education. We've been ably assisted also by Dr. Nicole Wab, our consultant. I hold a doctorate of education from the University of Massachusetts at Amherst. I've taught English at the junior and senior high school levels, have been principal of an elementary junior high school, an alternative high school, and a private K-12 school. I'm a former teacher educator, as associate professor of educational technology at the Oregon State University School of Education, and associate professor and program director for the Computers and Education Program at United States International University. Our goal at Coleman Charter Tech is to provide San Diego high school students with a personalized academic program, capturing their individual talents and achievement in a community-based, student-centered, and technology-enhanced environment. Our seat-based 9-12 high school program will follow the San Diego Unified Calendar. Our project-based learning curriculum is enhanced by computing technology, using Promethean active boards in every classroom, and a laptop for each student to use in school and at home. We've been approved by Google to use Google Apps, their cloud computing technology, schoolwide. Our college-bound students will benefit from rigorous and flexible courses, daily advising, service learning opportunities, and business mentors. We appreciate your taking the time to hear us and to consider our petition.
Thank you, Dr. McKinnon. Thank you. Great. Okay, item A-22, the adoption of the special education MOU.
Our college-bound students will benefit from rigorous and flexible courses, daily advising, service learning opportunities, and business mentors. We appreciate your taking the time to hear us and to consider our petition. Thank you, Dr. McKinnon. Thank you. Great.
Okay, uh, item A-22, the adoption of the Special Education MOU with Chancellor William McGill School of Success. Any comments? Okay, please vote. Great, and then finally, uh, report of closed session, actions, administrative assignments. Superintendent?
President Barrera, we have, uh, appointed Catherine Allison to Associate General Counsel, Legal Services Office.
Great. Okay, we are officially recessed, and, uh, we will meet upstairs for closed session. Yep, yep. Thank you, thank you.